I'd like to say good evening to everyone. This is May the 18th. A board meeting for tonight. And we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll stand and then after the Pledge of Allegiance, we would do the land acknowledgement. And then we will proceed on with the agenda for this evening. I pledge allegiance to the black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenroa Muicma Carkin Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you. And now we will proceed on with the agenda for the evening. Welcome once again to the meeting. And tonight's meeting, we are about to go into closed session. But before we do, the board is here to receive public comment on any closed session item that is agendas. The board now would adjourn to the, to closed session and reconvene in open session to continue with the regular agenda at 6:30 PM. If you are attending the meeting in person here at Dejounte and you wish to make a public comment now on closed session item, you would need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, there is no yielding of time to another speaker and there is no substitution of speaker permitted. Please finish up the orange sheets and the comment cards. And now if you are here in the audience and if you are in the Zoom or attending by phone, please get in line to speak by raising your Zoom hand now. To assess translation of the agenda, click the top webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available by Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Please note that the order of business may be changed without notice. Now, we are moving on to A5, which is roll call and Dr. Hurst, I have the roll call.
Absolutely. President Christian?
Here.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. He's not present at this time and he did share with me that he is coming, but would be a little late. Trustee Reckler?
Good afternoon, I'm present.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, present.
And trustee Phillips. He's not here at this time, but he did indicate to me as well that he would be here just running late. Three members present, two members are currently not here, so.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Now we will proceed on with the agenda. The disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. Government Code 54957-7. And what we will discuss will be liability claims, public employee appointment, public employee performance evaluation, conference with labor negotiators. And then we will adjourn closed session and reconvene open session at 6:30 PM. Are there any public comment in, for closed session?
No public.
Okay, thank you. And now we will close this portion and then we will go into closed session. See you at 6:30 PM. Thank you. We extended the meeting to 7:15, so we'll be getting started to 7:15. Welcome to the board meeting here at Dejounte Middle School. We are continuing on with the board meeting, May the 18th. To assess translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available in the Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis, the manner in which the Board of Education meetings are conducted has changed. Thank you in advance for understanding and cooperation as we experiment with new ways to conduct the people's business while allowing for maximum participation and adhering to our values of respect and safety for the community. We have changed public comment format, which now occurs at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last no more than one hour and include any agendas and non-agendized item. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. We are about to start public comment. So if you are attending the meeting in person, you would need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on the agenda item. Please finish up those hands and turn it to staff, the cards now. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, there is no, there is no yielding. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda. And now are there anything to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. President. Absolutely. Regarding agenda item A6.1, the board voted to reject the claim presented on behalf of an undisclosed minor dated March the 11th, 2022, related to alleged personal injuries. The members voted as follows. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. Trustee Phillips was absent. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. And President Christian, yes. For the principal of Valley View, the board voted as follows for Joey Sundberg. Trustee Smith Folds, no. Trustee Phillips, yes. Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Christian, yes. The principal of Pinole Middle School, Keno Carson, the board voted as follows. All were yes for Keno Carson. Principal of Dejounte Middle School, Jelani Cortez, the board voted as follows. All yes. For Betty Reed Soskins, Principal Jay Irvin, the board voted as follows. All were yes. And then for our Selpa Director Recommendation, for Sonia Neely Johnson, the board voted all yes. Thank you very much. That includes, that concludes my report out.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. And now we are proceeding on with the agenda, which we want to be three, which is public comment. Now we are on to be three public comments. Do we have? As a reminder, public comment will last no more than one hour and include any agendas and non-agendized item. Okay. So do we have any in the room that's going to be speaking?
Yes, we have two.
Okay.
Our first public comment is Ken Ryan.
Good evening, board. My name is Ken Ryan. I'm president of the Adult School Teachers Union. I've taught adult ESL enrichment in San Pablo for 28 years. The parents at Niestram Elementary School have been asking all year for an adult ESL class. Their request is supported by California EdCode 52540, which states that upon application of 20 or more persons above 18 years of age residing in a high school district who cannot speak, read, or write in the English language to a degree of proficiency equal to that required for the completion of grade eight of the elementary schools, the governing board of the high school district shall establish classes in English. There is a waitlist of more than 20 persons for an adult ESL class at Niestram. Before the pandemic, Niestram had two adult ESL classes. Currently, the adult school is not scheduling an adult ESL class at Niestram despite knowledge of the parents' requests. Please help parents get an adult ESL class at Niestram. And see you all this Saturday at 10 o'clock at Nickel Park to honor Mr. Willie Mays. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE SSA Local 21 President. I am here to say thank you very much for all the staff out there at the school sites. We have 13 days, 13 more days, and then we get to go into summer. So I am very excited. I'm also very excited for all of the students that will be participating in our enrichment programs this summer, and I hope that they all enjoy learning at our school sites and because I do know that our after-school program coordinator or extended learning program coordinator, Casey Blackburn, has made a tremendous effort at making that happen for them this summer and really getting some great program ideas out there for them. So go Casey. I would also like to say to the technology department, thank you. Thank you for working so diligently to make sure that all of our students out there are equipped, our teachers, our staff, but more so our students. Your dedication is beyond. And our technology department doesn't just exist to work on technology. It exists to make sure that board meetings such as this happen. It also makes sure that everybody is equipped for emergency services. It makes sure that we all have those phone technology that we can just pick up an email and say, hey, here you go, hey, Google Chat. So thank you very much, everybody in technology. You work very hard under the backs, back screens. I truly hope that everybody has a great week and 13 days, guys, 13 days.
Our first public comment on Zoom is Consuelo. Please unmute yourself and state your last name for the record. Hello? Our next public comment is Rafael Menas. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Rafael Menas. I'm a resident of Pinole. And tonight I'd like to say a few words to encourage the board to find a source of funding for older adult education. While adult education as a whole falls under purview of the community colleges, there's a group in our community that's often overlooked. The elderly, despite what many people may think, still benefit from education through formalized structures and through the sorts of programs that older adult education can provide, about the district has historically funded. To the best of my knowledge, the district believes that it no longer has the funds to fund those programs, but I would strongly urge it to reconsider. Older adult education provides significant benefits for disadvantaged groups throughout the area that WCCUSD serves. Helps create a better quality of life for the entire community and helps further the district's broader mission of education, since it's not just limited to K through 12, but also through state mandate, whether it's funded by the state or not, includes older adults as well. Older adult education is, I would argue, a critical component of education as a whole. We don't just stop learning at some point in our lives just because people say, oh, we're old, or we've retired, or for whatever reason. Older adult education is important and the district should fund it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. I am asking again if you guys would please consider having someone use Spanish as the language to allow our Spanish-speaking parents to know how to access the interpretation for the meetings. Also, I'm kind of concerned because our school site is having COVID cases again, which is which is reasonable, but I'm concerned because the school district website has conflicting information to what the district nurse has emailed to me. And we don't know what to do. I know there's a couple of communications people. I don't know if this falls under their purview or not, but it would kind of be nice if we could get the website shored up. The district nurse says it's not being updated because there's too many constantly changing items with COVID, which I understand, but we kind of had it up to date before when it was changing all the time. And it would just be easier to know for the public and the staff and everyone to know where to go to and where to get this information about what is and isn't supposed to happen with exposures and any other information that we need to know. So if there is any way to fix that or at, in a minimum, put a link to the state guidance that what I was told to look at on that website and just ask people to refer to that or something, that'd be amazing. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jose De Leon. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Superintendent Hurst, board members. I'd like to, most than anything else, give a shout out to all the principals, assistant principals, and district administrators. We're getting close to the end of the year and they're continuing to plan for the end of the year to protect their students from COVID and to have good celebrations for the students. Additionally, they're keeping an eye on the upcoming school year. How will they best serve the students for the upcoming year? So thank you for all the hard work in this strange year and thank you for preparing for the follow-up year. Additionally, the administrators have been also keeping an eye on COVID, making sure that we keep an eye on what is going on as far as the cases going up and making sure that the testing continues to be timely and enough tests for all the different sites. Also glad to hear the new principals coming in. Congratulations to them. Last thing is always ask the board to keep in mind that administrators are always planning for the upcoming year and that being informed of everything that is up and coming is very important to be able to talk to our staff, to be able to talk to our families, and to make the best plans for the upcoming school year. Once again, thank you and have a good night.
Our next public comment is Kate Butler. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Kate Burkard, and I'm a student at St. John's Senior Center that is supported by the school district. Three years ago, we were notified that our program would be discontinued. Thanks to the board at that time, they reinstated it, and we had three years of good learning and association. Today, we've been told again that we probably, we will not be continued. The Commission on Aging has scheduled a meeting in April with Dr. Hurst and two board members to discuss the situation. Dr. Hurst was not able to attend. Only one board member, Mr. Phillips, was in attendance. Dr. Hurst did not send a representative. Then it was on the agenda in early May for the adult education. That was pulled off the agenda. Again, it was on the agenda for tonight and it was pulled with no public announcement as to why it was pulled. You can see why we're frustrated and disappointed. We had a meeting scheduled with the county to talk about other funds earlier in the month. Dr. Hurst canceled that meeting. We have another meeting scheduled for next week, and we hope that that will continue and that we will not have to cancel it. But the year is getting to be close to the end. The teacher at the St. John's program is retiring. We should be in the process of looking at applicants and filling that position, but we don't even know what's going to happen with the program. Please don't let this fall through the cracks and take care of it now. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lisa Dispro. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, ma'am? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Hurst and board members. Tonight, as a recently retired Aloney Elementary teacher, I would like to bring to your attention a serious problem that has occurred at Aloney Elementary in Hercules this February 28th and has not been resolved. The question I want to put towards the board and the superintendent is this. Is safety still a district top priority? On February 28th, an intruder came on campus, interacted with a student, and exposed himself to the student. Ms. Moses, the principal of Aloney Elementary, contacted the police. A report was filed, an investigation was initiated, and the following day, a safety assessment process was initiated and concluded. That, that very day, March 1st, Ms. Moses informed the district in writing, we see an email to the community of Aloney stating that they recommend a gate be installed in this one location and that surveillance cameras be installed. This part of Aloney is adjacent to a community park that invites many people to come and walk through the area. It is a more public site than most of our campuses. The question I want to ask is why two and a half months later has this issue not been resolved? What needs to happen before the students, the parents, and the staff of Aloney can be assured that they will not encounter further problems of even a more serious nature? Please resolve this. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Linda Kane. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, school board, president, and Dr. Hurst. We appreciate, I appreciate your time and my fellow seniors appreciate your time. Linda Kane is my name. I live in El Cerrito. I'm a retired state employee and I'm an active member of my community. Since retiring, I discovered two local treasures, the senior centers at Christ Lutheran and St. John's that are funded by WCCUSD. And along with Sakura Kai, these programs are run by teachers funded by the school district for either two days a month or one day a week, and they're housed by local churches. They offer classes such as Spanish, German, exercise, folk dancing, ukulele, watercolor painting, and Japanese culture. I'm an active participant in the ukulele classes and groups, and last year somehow I ended up being the leader of the ukulele group at CLC. But I'm really enjoying it. It's my pleasure to keep improving on ukulele and spend time singing and learning and playing with a group of pleasant, smart, and interesting seniors. We are learning things, which is why we fit into the WCCUSD education picture. Just because we are retired does not mean that we've stopped learning. And as you've already heard, our funding is about to run out. We're very anxious about what our future is. The, the teacher at St. John's is retiring and we don't know who will be replacing her because nothing is happening right now. And we understand there may be Title X money or Measure X money. There may be money in the governor's budget. You know, please find something to, to be able to fund our continuing adult education program before the seniors get too old to be able to continue with it. to be able to fund our continuing adult education program before the seniors get too old to be able to continue with it. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Diane Lee. Please unmute yourself. Hello? Our next public comment is Nora Ponse Calhoun. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Nora Ponse. I am a parent of a child at Washington Elementary School, and I'm really concerned with the lack of structure, support, and leadership under Ms. Obadossier. On November 8th, I went in with a formal 504 plan request. Fast forward to March 14th, after having the meeting rescheduled three times, the co-chair, Ms. Obadossier, was not in attendance. A month later, she disclosed to me that she didn't remember whether she signed off on papers to go ahead with the 504 plan in place. Here we are, six months after my formal request and two weeks before school ends, and I still have no official 504 plan in place or anything in terms of my formal complaint submitted. I met with Darlene Almeda, the Compliance Officer for Special Education, and she actually suggested I pull my son from Washington Elementary School, given the lack of support from the co-chair in place, which is Ms. Obadossier. So I'm still waiting on a response based upon that. Secondary issues, on December 17th, I was left alone for a full day of instruction at Washington Elementary School in the kindergarten class. I also submitted a formal complaint on that, and I am waiting for the investigation and a proper response. My understanding, it goes against policy and procedure for the state of California, and I am waiting for a response on that. That was submitted back on last month, and as I said, I have no response on that. Another issue that I'm concerned with is, under Washington, we are a dual immersion program. We brought in teachers from Spain. My understanding, out of the five teachers that were brought in, four will not be reattending because, one, there was a delay on actually their contract renewing it, and secondly, the lack of leadership has not wanted any of them to come back, so I would like some form of accountability.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm gonna paraphrase a great educator. Her name is Rita Pearson. She has a TED Talk, so I encourage anybody to go and watch it. She's been an educator for over 40 years, and a good friend sent it to me when I really, really needed it, as we are in the home stretch of this year. So she went on to say, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." So teachers become great actors, great actresses, and we come to work, don't even feel like it. And we listen to policy, please nobody take offense, that we listen to policy that doesn't sometimes make sense. And we teach anyway, because that's what we do. Is this job tough? OMG, yes it is. Oh my God, you bet it is. But it is not impossible. We can do this. I can do this. I was born for this. So what I want to share with my educator colleagues, and really anybody who touches the lives of children, it is my hope and prayer that during the summer months that we all rest, relax, and rejuvenate, if needed to reclaim their joy in being an educator, reclaim your joy and return in the fall and be the champion that every one of our students needs and that every one of our students deserves. Peace and blessings, everybody.
Our next public comment is Robert Mandel. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Bob Mandel. I'm an adult ed, he had cell teacher. And the fact that you got basically three adult ed issues facing you tonight strongly suggests that the board needs to pay very close attention to what's going on in there. When the new Director of Labor Relations was hired, he informed us his highest priority would be settling our first ever contract. We've been bargaining for four years. Instead, he's put every obstacle possible in the way, and we ended up filing an unfair labor practice. It appears, and I stress the word appears, that this afternoon the district decided that we are indeed a legitimate union. But based on the back and forth and flagrant disregard for the law, we don't take that on its face. Second issue, Nystrom. The fact that the adult ed had and won't open classes where there have been classes for years and even decades in elementary schools and in churches puts an absolute obstacle in the way of people enrolling. And we documented to the board that there's already a catch-22 testing requirement that's blocking people. Lastly, I would strongly support the older adults program. You voted before to keep it open. Please find the money. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Amy Aldrich. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
But that is wonderful. My name is Amy Aldrich, and I am an older adult teacher. I'm one of four people who teach older adults in our community, not the least of which is Sakura Kai, which is a meeting twice a month for Japanese-speaking people that was established 49 years ago for the people who had come into their seniority after having been interred. They started their lives all over again, and they still make a very lively and wonderful cultural contribution to our community. They teach kids to do taiko drumming. They volunteer to do that. We need to support them and give them a room to do their practicing in so that they can make these performances. There was one scheduled for Kennedy High. They didn't have room or time to do the rehearsal they needed to, to present that on the requested date, unfortunately. That's one program. There is another, as you've heard already, at St. John's and at Christ Lutheran, but I teach older adults fitness, and I also teach people how to live without pain. These programs are incredibly important to them, and we can't lose funding. I know there is talk of funding. Recently, very recently, we were told there would be funding, and we need to see that as a document. We need to be supporting you making those good decisions for us. So I hope that we can all find a way to do that. I did want to read a quote about older people in our culture who, this is a quote from "The Return to Love" by Mary Ann Williamson, but now I am out of time. So I will do it some other way. I'll email it to all of you on the board and to you too, Dr. Hurst. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jason Fenimore. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm calling from, as a parent of a student at Korematsu and also enrolled in the DI program, DI program by apology. And we're concerned about the continuation of the program going into El Cerrito High School. It's come to our acute understanding yesterday by a teacher that it's been considered to be discontinued. Now, I'd like for everybody with decision power here to understand that we've, and let's go for other families too, made substantial commitment to this program and have planned our lives around it. And for us not to be able to follow through with what we had planned is going to be distressing, at the very least, and very disappointing. I'd like for y'all to reconsider if that is the case. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Erica Cruzes. Please unmute yourself.
Buenas tardes, me escuchan?
Si.
Okay, perfecto. Mi nombre es Erica Cruzes. Muy buenas tardes. Este hoy... Permíteme. Hoy me dirijo ante ustedes con gran tristeza y desilusión de llegar a mis oídos que alguien quiere menospreciar el programa de DIA-LIFE, el programa dual, en donde asisten mis hijos de la escuela Washington, alineada con Cora Maxon y El Cerrito High. Hace más de 16 años, un grupo de padres vieron y entendieron la gran importancia de preparar a nuestros hijos para el futuro en su educación, la cual una de ellas es ser bilingüe, pero sobre todo biliterarios. El estudiante bilingüe desarrolla un conocimiento conectivo donde su comprensión es más amplia para resolver problemas matemáticos, desarrollar sólidas habilidades de pensamiento, entre otras. El volverse bilingue ayuda a los niños a conservar fuertes lazos con su familia y su cultura y su comunidad. Los estudiantes que creen en las familias bilingües muestran un mayor autocontrol. En este distrito, no contábamos con datos para tener una idea clara de los beneficios de un niño bilingüe. Sin embargo, solo en sexto grado, diez niños se reclasificaron en este 2022. Dos niños de educación tradicional y ocho son del programa de DIA-LIFE. También es una pena ver que no respetaron, guiaron, y apoyaron a nuestros maestros bilingües que llegaron en este año del extranjero. Pero sobre todo, que no los contrataron para que continuaran en nuestra escuela. Tanto que los necesitamos y sabemos lo mucho que cuesta. Pero no solo ellos, sino nuestros maestros internos que aman este programa de DIA-LIFE. Cuando mi hija Andrea cursaba el cuarto grado, me dijo, "Mamá, creo que tengo un poder. Puedo hablar, pienso, y entiendo dos idiomas." Gracias.
Our next public comment is Anna Leonardi. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Paola Castrejon Paraj. Please unmute yourself. Sorry, we cannot promote two panelists. Our next public speaker is Verid Cohen. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. I'm a parent of a child in Korematsu Middle School, also in the DI program. We've just been informed, just like another parent mentioned earlier, that the DI program is not going to continue to El Cerrito High. It's absolutely ridiculous that just about a year ago, it's the first time that the district enhanced Korematsu Middle School with the DI program. For years, we've been advocating for the continuation of the program, strengthening of the program. And finally, we got Korematsu to strengthen the program and escort our children through this DI program and continuation. And now we're facing that those children are going to get stopped when they go to high school. Please reconsider. We've worked so hard to get to this point, and would really appreciate to continue if you need parent support. We're happy to continue the discussion, just like we did a couple of years ago. There's a few teachers that are happy to contribute as well. Let's continue that discussion before decisions are made. Thank you for your consideration.
And our last public comment is Anna. Please unmute yourself and state your last name for the record.
Hello?
Yes.
This is Anna Leonardi, and I'm calling on behalf of the Washington Dual Immersion Program. I've heard some of the same things that the other parents have been hearing. And to speak to, I've been with the Dual Immersion Program at its conception. It has moved mountains for my oldest daughter. You know, she's now at a college in England, getting her BE. So this program works, so I don't know why there's talk of closing down the Dual Immersion Program when it opens the windows and doors and possibilities for the minorities in this community. I want to say that the Dual Immersion Program really works. It has opened doors for many children who have gone through it. And we need to keep it open so that we open doors for the next generation that's coming up as well. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to first thank everybody who participated in giving a public comment. Thank you for expressing yourself. And now we will continue with the agenda. Now we're going to B4, which is the Agenda Review and Adoption. So are there any changes to the agenda? Trustee Reckler?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to motion that F, Discussion Items, move before E, Action Items. And the order is F2, which is the third interim, followed by F1, Attendance and Student Enrollment Update, followed by F3, Board Policies Update Due to Significant Disproportionality.
All right. Are there any more of the changes? All right, so do you want to vote? Okay, so do we second to move it?
I second the motion.
All right. Second, and the agenda has amended? All right. To the vote?
Youngest.
Yeah, we are on to the vote. So trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
Trustee Smith Foal?
Smith Foal, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
And Clerk Dazellis Hoare?
Dazellis Hoare, yes.
All right, and I am a yes. And and the motion carries, and so we move on to the next item, which is approval of minutes of the January 26, 2022, and February 16, 2022. So we need to approve those minutes. Do we have a second? Go ahead.
I move that the minutes are approved as presented.
All right, it's been moved by trustee Reckler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been seconded by trustee Leon. And now on All right, it's been seconded by trustee Leon. And now on to the vote. Trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
Trustee Smith Fall?
Smith Falls, yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
And Clerk Gonzalez Hoyer?
Gonzalez, yes.
All right, and myself a yes. All right, and we go to the next February the sixteenth twenty twenty-two approval of minutes. So I need a second. A motion?
President Christian, I'll move that we approve the minutes for February sixteen twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and I need a second.
Reckler will second.
All right, it's been moved by Clerk Gonzalez Hoyer, seconded by trustee Reckler. And on to the vote, trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
Uh, trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
Uh, trustee Smith Fall?
Smith Falls, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Uh, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
All right, and Clerk Gonzalez Hoyer?
Gonzalez, yes.
All right, and myself, yes. And the motion carries. And now we will move on to the next item. And this here is the recognition and participation of our students. So I'm gonna turn this to Dr. Hurst.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It is an honor and a privilege to recognize these two individuals are two student trustees. And I have watched them over this term and sort of feel shortchanged. And I was telling them this yesterday, the time is going by so fast with them. But these are two amazing leaders. I meet with them before every board meeting, just going over the agenda. They ask very good questions and detailed, specific questions. Yet they have a very humble spirit about both of them. Uh, here's some of the qualities that I've noticed about them. They're dependable. They're very enthusiastic. They take initiative. They're genuinely interested and actively involved in making our district better for their peers. And they've shown that by being actively involved in the strategic planning process. And we asked them to be involved in the student panel and they showed up. And they didn't just show up for the student panel, but they came back for additional sessions. So they are definitely committed. They are genuinely interested also in making sure they listen to the students. And I've just watched how they collect information. And what's different from these two leaders that I've seen from other student trustees is they go on school visits with our board members, with the superintendents. And that's something I have not seen in this district, to be honest with you, from other student trustees, where they're taking initiative to do that. And to be honest with you, from other districts as well. So I wanted to commend them for really seeking out student voice. And I've watched them take that information, engage with students and give detailed presentations in the board meeting. And again, another characteristic that really stands out about them that I haven't seen from other student trustees, they take the time to really detail a presentation, acquiring all those voices from the students, capturing it in a presentation and sharing the concerns across schools about here's some of the issues at an elementary school, here's some of the issues at a middle and high school. So I want to publicly commend them for their leadership and actively soliciting feedback. They are organized. And I want to say to Martin and to Angelica, thank you so much for your leadership. I really thoroughly enjoyed working with you too. You are leaders. And we have a plaque to present to both of you. And it says, Presented to Martin Leon and Angelica Flores, Student Board Representative, Spring Semester twenty twenty-two. In recognition of your leadership and service to the students of West Contra Costa Unified School District, Board of Education, I salute you two leaders. You are awesome. Thank you. So we want to show the plaques to the public as well. I'm holding up to the screen. Hopefully you can see it. Very nice. And for those in the audience as well, we congratulate you. And this time I turn it over to the board for comments.
Clerk Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you, President Christian. Trustee Leon, trustee Flores. I mean, I feel such pride because, one, trustee Leon, you are from an area, you go to middle college and the ends of high school. Um, and I feel like we already knew you from your brother, but you have brought your own spin to, to the board. And trustee Flores, obviously, people don't, not many people know, but trustee Flores was one of my students at Bayview, uh, which makes me feel even more pride of the journey you have taken. Um, I, I want to wish you both, you know, a great journey moving forward. Uh, I know that it sounds, I sound like I have a broken record and Stephanie Garcia, I was in the, on the, here, past trustee, heard me say this before, but I hope that in a few years after you've gone on a journey and come back, that you'll serve on the board and you'll take on our seats. Um, I think that you have both done incredible amount of work. Uh, one of my favorite things and memories was going to sites with you all. I also feel a short change. I feel like this came so fast. Um, but I really do appreciate the voice that you brought to the board. Um, I always find it interesting thinking maybe students won't, won't express themselves or won't bring us more, a stronger voice to the board because we have very strong personalities up here. But, but I'm always pleasantly surprised that that never happens. And you both definitely brought it to a new level. So you both should be really proud of the work that you did up here representing your fellow students. So thank you both. Um, and, and can't see what you, can't wait to see what you do next.
Uh, trustee Reckler?
So to the student trustees, thank you so much for your wonderful thoughtful comments and your, your fire and your passion. It's always so wonderful to have student trustees join us and lend their thoughts and opinions to the business of the school district. You have extremely bright futures and I know that you will do quite well. I sent an email, a an opportunity for both of you to join the Ed one hundred Student Leader Academy, which happens in June. I'm going to put it in the chat and press the send button. It's for students just like you and for your peers. So please share it with the All Student Congress. I think that you will learn a lot. They have wonderful guest speakers from all facets of education. And I know that you will learn from it and come away enriched. So all the best. Please stay in touch with us. Um, you know, we're here to help you, mentor you. Maybe we can job you, resume you, letter of recommendation you. So always keep in touch with us and all the best. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we go to trustee Phillips.
Thank you. To both of the student trustees, I want to say that I have observed growth in both of you. And I had a conversation actually with my wife last night and this morning about growth and how important it is that we grow no matter where we are or how strong we think we are. And I've watched you two honestly become more analytical uh as your time on the board has passed. Um, I think that you have kept the same enthusiasm, which is great. Um, and I think you've kept the same level of passion, but I've actually watched you slow down and consider the items that are before you very differently than you did when you began here. And I want to applaud you both for that. And what I want to do is also recommend, strongly recommend that what you've done here, the slowing of things and the processing, the analyzing, the critical thinking, keep that up. Because as you go forward in this life, whether it's into college or career or into your own political life, if that's what you choose to do, taking a moment to think about what you are considering and the implications of what you are considering will do you well. And it will do well to the people that you are serving. And what I'm saying right now is not flowery, but I am paying you a very high compliment. Critical thinking skills are what you should walk away from this position with in all of your educational endeavors. So thank you. I want to let both of you know that I have seen growth and that I have noticed it. And it served you well and you wear it well. So continue to do that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And now we go to trustee Smith Fall?
I just want to say, um, thank you. I want to say that you have taught me a lot. I want to say that you guys were advocates before you got the title of student trustees. And I know you will be advocates with the retired title of student trustees. Go out and make noise. Go out and make good trouble. Continue to do you and continue to take the voices of the people out to everyone and hold people accountable. That's what I've seen. I've seen you walk in and I've seen you tell the story of the students. And that's what we need and that's what you were required to do and you did it well. This is not easy. This is not easy, but you, you did it well. And I want to thank both of you. I had the pleasure of meeting trustee Flores's mother. I see where she gets it from. I, I know trustee Leon's brother, I see where he gets it from. You guys were built for this. It's inside of you. It's what you're made for. So continue to advocate. Continue to change, continue to change it, change it all. You know what's not right? Change it. Voice it. Continue to just do the best that you absolutely can. I appreciate you both and I'm looking forward to the next phase. Thank you.
All right, thank you, trustee Smith Fall. And then I just want to say to trustee Leon and trustee Flores, you guys have eagerness and, you know, you, you had that, that, uh, that, that mindset, that I'm gonna do this and to make it happen. And so, um, I appreciate your leadership. And you have so much to offer and continue to build and continue to grow and use everything you have and be the best that you can be. And enjoy uh being up here with you. This is like time just moves so quick. So and, and I know we got some new ones coming in, but eh, you, you get used to people and now it's time to go. So keep, keep growing and thank you for your service and contribution and especially as students of our school district. Thank you. Yes. And we would like for you guys to say something. Uh, trustee Flores, you want to go or?
I'll go first.
All right.
Um, I just wanted to thank the board that the last six months, five months, six months have definitely been a wild journey, wild ride. Uh, I want to thank trustee Reckler for her recommendation to join the Ed one hundred program. I think that's definitely something that I advertised to the All Student Congress. We definitely liked them to do. I want to thank trustee Phillips for your words of encouragement and how to step into the future with critical thinking. Thank you, Demetrio Gonzalez, with your thoughtful words. I definitely had a good time going to the site visits with you, the multiple schools in one day. And trustee Smithfold, it's been a pleasure working with you, advocating, also going on site visits as well and seeing what needs to be fixed and what needs to be improved in our district. And trustee Christian, definitely, uh, it's been, it's been a pleasure seeing you work, learning from you and your management of the board. And lastly, superintendent Dr. Hurst, it's been a, it's been a good ride. He had a lot of, a lot of fun, a lot of laughs. And I'm definitely hopeful to see and come back to the board in the future. Thank you.
Okay, um, so for me, obviously, I didn't expect to be here, you know, and I definitely didn't expect to make it until like now, until the end, right? You guys probably knew I was pretty nervous. Um, I didn't, I didn't think I was like worthy enough to be here. And I just really want to thank my teachers because they've also supported me a lot. My parents and you guys, um, for giving me that mentorship and, you know, always responding to my questions, uh, no judgment, you know, uh, that, that really helped me a lot. Also, trustee Jamila, thank you so much for making me feel comfortable and making me feel accepted. That's something I'll always remember. I'm getting a little emotional, but it was a pleasure working with everybody. And I really hope to come back here and to support my community. Because I really think this is important. You know, a lot of, um, a lot of the students in Richmond, we often feel left behind. We don't often feel heard. And, you know, I just really want to make everybody feel included and to make them feel that their voice matters too, you know? So I just really thank you guys for giving me this opportunity. Thank you to my principal for telling me about this. And, um, yeah, I think, just very thankful for everything, for every, for everybody. Thank you.
President Christian. President Christian. I can't leave this conversation without this young lady knowing that she is worthy, she is valued, she is more than enough. You did it and you did it so well. Please pat yourself on the back. Pat yourself on the back. Give yourself a sticker. You did it. And I'm very, very proud of you. And you, I, I just don't ever think you were not worthy enough to be here. You're worthy enough to be here in any space that you need to be in and that you want to be in. Do you know that? I just want you to really own that. You're more than enough. Thank you for everything that you did for us. I appreciate you and appreciate the voice that you brought. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And man, so now we will shift gears and we will go on to the rest of the agenda, which we will go to the consent items. See? And so anybody want to pull or everything? Um, need a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
President Christian, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent items.
All right, it's been moved by trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoyer? Is there a second?
Reckler will second consent.
Okay, it's been seconded by trustee Reckler. And now we'll go on to the vote. So we go to trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
All right, trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
All right. Trustee Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips. All right, and then we have trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, thank you. And clerk Gonzalez Hoyer.
Gonzalez Hoyer, yes.
All right, thank you. Myself a yes. And so the motion carries and the consent calendar is adopted. And now we would go to the superintendent communication.
Thank you. Thank you so much, sir. Can we pull up the presentation, please? If we can go to just spend a moment at this first slide. If you can go back, please. I just want to take note of some of the pictures here. This is at the bottom, you could see superintendent of our county office of education. Lynn Mackey, uh, we took several visits to a few schools within the district. You can see those at the bottom. Then at the, the top, you can see that there is a, a presentation from the Lions Club. To Ms. Mary Bridges at Betty Reed Soskins, as at the top left almost. And then the Lupus Day, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So just wanted to call those out. And then students presenting out an award ceremony for OAS, uh, next slide. We really wanted to call everyone's attention to the graduation schedule. We're so excited for our graduating classes. Um, our first graduation ceremony, uh, we have this coming Saturday and it's going to be Middle College. At Concha Costa College, starting at 10 o'clock. And I won't read all of them off, but I wanted to make sure that this was made available to the board and to the public. Next slide. One of the things we're really excited about is the continued conversations around the strategic planning process. I want to take the time to thank the board members, especially who have been involved in multiple processes. Even for more than one family of schools, I've seen multiple board members showing up. I really appreciate that. You're really getting the opportunity to hear the detailed conversations. Appreciation to all the, the staff, employees that are behind the scenes. I did receive an email from a board member that shared that. She thought that these meetings have been well planned and well thought out. So I want to just give kudos to the logistics team. Who's been behind it. So I want to just share that. I want to encourage everyone that's listening to please continue coming out. We have our third community session meetings that's gearing up for next week. But if you look at this diagram, you could see how we are moving forward. And if you remember, again, I have to have the consistency. When I first came here, I shared about, let's talk about our current reality and we did listening sessions. We had the equity audit come in, uncovered rocks. We know our gaps or more about our gaps. And then we said we was going to go into the strategic planning process. So that's what meeting number one really has been about, listening to our students, student panel. Setting the stage for strategic planning. And then I talked also about this is the first level. There's going to be some key products from this first level of sessions with the community. That is the vision, mission, core values, equity state statement, anti-racist statement. A graduate profile, the scorecard as well, and organizational goals. Those are all products. There'll also be a time, once we have all those products, where we go deeper into how do we get to the, to the mission? How do we get to our vision? So more of the how-to conversations are going to happen. We had our second series of community meetings and that was really focused on. So let's talk about what a mission is and it's really about our purpose, our why, what do we really want to be good at, at WCC USD? We talked about our vision, our what, where we want our students to be in the next 10, five to 10 years from now. So the really exciting piece is we get to put this information together, have our third series of meetings. Starting next week and that's going to really be an opportunity for us to narrow down those vision statements because that's what happened at the second meeting. We started developing words and phrases and then we started crafting a strategic direction for us in the future. And then this third meeting, we want you to be there. So we're going to actually take sample statements that were created by us and narrow that down and then we'll start going into the graduate profile. So we'll be asking questions about what are the habits of minds that we want our students to have when they graduate? What are the skills that we desire our students to have when they graduate? And then I received feedback from some board members and some community members about how do we really focus more on populations that have not been at these meetings? And we know that we're missing voices from the Latinx community, our English learners as well. We're missing voices from African-American community, our special needs population as well. So how do we use our, our scouts to really do phone outreach? How do we use our PAC meetings so that we're messaging at those PAC meetings also? How do we continue to solicit student voice during school time? So those are the things that we're focusing on. And then really the goal is to survey the entire community. We want everyone to have input in this process. And we've been averaging roughly around 40 to 50 people at these meetings. Some is a little less, but the conversation, the dialogue has been powerful. So we really want to get all this information. We want to survey the entire community. We want everyone to have input on these processes. And then at the very end, right around the end of June, a timeframe, we'll have these artifacts. Uh, in place and then we'll be bringing this to the board and have a broader conversation about the next steps. So now that we have these products, what are the next steps in actually developing the actual strategic planning piece, the how-tos? You can see in the middle of each of these conversations, we have the guiding coalition. The guiding coalition is the cross-section of all stakeholders. And I'll share with you that these people have been working hard, meeting facilitated by Tracy Logan. Thank you, Tracy. And really got in these conversations and synthesizing this, this information and getting it ready for the next community meeting. So a lot of great work, a lot of great planning, a lot of people that thank, we just want to encourage everyone to participate. Next slide. So we wanted to share with you the next round, the third session of meetings is going to be, um, May 23rd, um, at Sylvester Greenwood Academy. May 24th at Hercules Middle School, May 25th at Helms Middle School. And then for our virtual app, option, if you can't make that, it's not on here, but it's June the first of Wednesday. Next slide. So I talked about this, you saw a picture at the very beginning and we wanted to really highlight the world Lupus Day. Uh, we know that lupus is a silent chronic autoimmune disease that can damage any part of the body. It was an honor to meet Anna Enriquez Palacios. And I wanted to give a special thank you and shout out to her for organizing an amazing event. They celebrated with the staff at Pino on May the 10th. She was handing out shirts, she was handing out stickers, bracelets, a lot of, um, media, print media as well. And I want to just thank you also, Ms. Anna, for introducing me to Señorita Bread. So I just want to say thank you for that. And next slide. We also want to recognize today as being Speech Pathologist Day. So in the past 100 years, speech language pathology has grown and developed into a profession that offers a wide range of services. Such as evaluating, diagnosing, treating and helping to prevent communication disorders in children and adults. Our speech language pathologists are a vital part of our school community. And they devote their time and energy to help others communicate. And we just want to say a special thank you and appreciation for all of your hard work and dedication for our students. Thank you. Next slide. And that concludes my report. I will say that we have student reps, so I am yielding some of my time to. Potential prospective student reps and I'm going to turn it over to student trustee Leon.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Um, so we have four of our All Student Congress members here tonight. They will be the next, some next school year, 2022, 2023 student trustees. They have yet to pick their terms of either the fall or the spring semester. And they're here tonight to just give a couple of words of, um, just want to introduce themselves. We're trying to implement the next trustees earlier than when they start their term so they could have, um, some footing onto how to manage disposition. So we're really excited to have them here. And I will introduce each of them so they could come up to the podium to give a couple of words. So I find Dr. Hurst. Yes, go ahead. All right. And then, uh, so we'll do this alphabetically. So our first student is from Richmond High School. Her name is Kaylee Baron. Uh, she's a junior and yeah, you come to the podium. There's a button to the left or to the right side. It's a face with.
Is this good? Good evening, everyone. My name is Kaylee Baron and I'm a junior in the Law Academy at Richmond High School. I'm very active in my community and school and I deeply care for the community that I'm helping serve. And I believe this is what makes me a good candidate for next year's student trustee. I want to be an advocate for all students, but I also want to be someone who helps. Community members make real progress and change within their community. Because everyone deserves a chance to participate in helping create a better future for our school district. I'm currently president of our school's mock trial club and I've been our school's choir club president for two years now. These two clubs have helped me so much in improving on my skills such as public speaking, communication, quick thinking, action and more. I'm also currently first chair and section leader for our school's clarinet section in our symphonic and marching band respectively. Within these roles, I focus on doing my best to include all students. And I've even helped coordinate events as an effort to bring together and highlight student voices and accomplishments. I've helped plan things like choir performances and have helped guide my clarinet section towards success in marching competitions and events. And next year I plan on working closely with our law academy to create a mentorship program for incoming helms freshmen to help prepare them for high school. I'm passionate about all the roles that I have and I take great pride in being able to represent them today. I would be more than honored to advocate and support my community and the members of this school district. I strongly believe that I'm an excellent candidate for next year's student trustee. And I would do my best to represent students and help them towards a path of success. Once again, my name is Kaylee Baron. Thank you for your time and consideration and have a good evening. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. Uh, our second candidate will be CJ Miles. She is a junior from Deans High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is CJ Miles and I'm a junior attending Deans High School. For several years prior to attending the school, I've been a member of the Deans community as a sports photographer for my company, Kukoya Photography. This gave me the opportunity to interact with teachers, administrators, parents and alumni. I'm involved in a variety of extracurriculars at my school. I'm a member of the Deans track and field and cross-country teams. And for the past two years, I've been the vice president of my school's Black Student Union, uh, possibly next year's president. In the Black Student Union, we work to educate black youth on our history and facilitate discussions about world events that affect our community. I'm also a member of my school's law academy where I participate as a prosecution and defense attorney on our mock trial team. The experiences I had with mock trial this year gave me the opportunity to work with lawyers and make connections with judges and scorers. I won several awards for my performance this year, including judge's choice and outstanding opening statement. I've grown a sort of reputation for my advocacy skills, according to the admins at my school site. Due to this, I'm often asked to voice my opinion as a student. During the 2019-2020 school year, I worked with the previous superintendent, Matthew Duffy, and the previous principal of my school, Summer Sigler. To observe a unique form of academic administration at the Lindsay Unified School District. I have also worked with the Office of African-American Student Achievement as a student representative during the 2020. HBCU Bowl and more recently during a board meeting as part of this year's Black History Month ceremony. I've also participated as a student panelist during the strategic planning meeting at my school site. As student trustee, I hope to represent the student voice. I believe my position as an African-American and Filipino scholar. And an active member of my community brings a different perspective to the table. I would be honored to actively represent the WCC USD student body. Once again, my name is CJ Miles. Thank you for your time.
All right, and thank you. Our next candidate is Daniela Santos. She is a junior from Middle College High School.
Hello, good evening. My name is Daniela Santos. I'm a current All Student Congress member and a rising senior at Middle College High School. And I am going to be one of the four student trustees for the 2022 to 23 school year. And I really wanted to take this time to talk a little bit about what I hope to bring to the board. From a student's perspective, I am hoping to bring a voice to not only students from my site, but also a voice for students throughout the district. Having spent my freshman year at Richmond High School, I really resonated with trustee Flores's feelings of feeling inadequate and unheard for places like these. So I hope that I can be a voice for those who feel the same. As a student ambassador at East Bay Center for the Performing Arts, I want to speak from the perspective of an artist and a musician. I hope to bring attention to the arts as well. The arts, performing and music gave me a voice when I felt unheard and I recognize the importance of this type of education in our district. As I heard other people mention earlier during public comment. And finally, from the perspective of a Hispanic immigrant, I want to be there for the, for those who like myself have felt alienated. I am passionate about what I do and I will be bringing the same passion to the board. I hope that together we are able to build a better school district for generations to come. And I am hoping that even if it's just through advisory votes, I can be a part of creating that prosperity for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last candidate will be Evelyn Song Panya. She is a junior at Middle College High School.
Is this working? All right. Hi, everyone. My name's Evelyn Song Panya and I'm a current junior at Middle College High School. So right now, as a student, a middle college high school with the upcoming pandemic or the ongoing one at the moment. I felt underrepresented because especially with the Asian hate going on. I felt like as a Leotian student, I felt I didn't represent myself enough in the community. And I wanted to join the All Student Congress because of that. I wanted to make a change. I wanted to make it feel that students could come to someone. And they could feel they aren't undermined or. and they could feel they aren't undermined or underrepresented as someone of a certain demographic. And I want people to have opportunities. And what do you call it? As a middle college student, I've been part of Contra Costa College's advocate since freshman year of 2020. And I was a staff editor and writer, and I would train new writers. And you call it, I feel like I'm more than adept into being a voice and representation for my community as a district. And because I've done it for a campus, I feel like I could do it for a whole district now. And I'm currently interning for AIM High, the summer program, where I help and advise as an assistant teacher or an assistant to assistant teachers as a student advisor for sixth to ninth grade students. And being someone they come to, being someone that they come to with their problems, I feel like I understand the student voice well enough to be able to represent that community, especially as a Leotian student. I want to make sure that Asians are more represented in this area. And what do you call it? And as a student trustee, I had a history teacher named Stephen Hoffman. He was someone I came to a lot with my problems when we had a problem with SATs not being presented at our school because there was no budget for it. I felt underrepresented. I felt like I could go to him for help and for a solution. And I want to be like that for the students of the district. I want to be a Stephen Hoffman. I want to be a person that could come to. And that's why what I would do as student trustee. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, student, future student trustees. And I will now open this for comment if Dr. Hurst is back. So yeah, comment questions. Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments, questions pertaining to the presentation? Oh, trustee Smith Foll.
Thank you so much. Can you, can everyone hear me? Thank you so much. To the superintendent report, I want to say that the OASA event was an oratorical fest. It was absolutely wonderful. The students got up there and did poetry. They spoke the original material and the researches they did. It was absolutely wonderful. Dr. Hurst, the location of the next meetings, please. Greenwood is going to be where? Is it in a gym? Is it in a cafeteria? Hercules Middle School, will that be in the cafeteria or the library in Hams? Where would that meeting be located?
Trustees, Ms. Foll, Superintendent Hurst stepped out, but I wrote your question down. When he returns, I will give it to him.
Okay. And then trustee Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, will you also write down the question of the Guiding Coalition? The list, I'm not sure if he published the list of the Guiding Coalition members. If so, where can I find that? Finally, the question of the board spot for the Guiding Coalition. If he made a recommendation to have a board member on that spot, he was supposed to get back to us about that. So I would like to know if he's made that decision. And I would like to say to the future student trustees that I am absolutely in awe. I cannot wait till you take that seat. I am an avid clarinet player. Been playing the clarinet since I was in the fourth grade. I love the fact that we have two individuals who are in the Law Academy. I'm ready for you to bring it full force. The fact that VAPA is important, VAPA is important to me as well. And the young person who talked about being the Stephen Hoffman, I expect you to be more than that, more than the Stephen Hoffman that was in your life. You are now going to represent and be that Stephen Hoffman and more than in somebody else's life. So thank you so very much. I am absolutely amazed. And I believe all of you go by she pronouns or they pronouns. And it is going to be a board that is absolutely wonderful. I am looking forward to all that you bring and the perspective that you bring, not only as individuals, she, they pronouns, but as everything that you have already said that you already do for your community. I just, it's going to be amazing. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Christian. Trustee Smith Folds, just to answer one of your questions, the members of the Guiding Coalition are available on the district's strategic plan website. It's www.wccusd.net/strategicplan. It's also where you will find flyers for each of the upcoming strategic plan sessions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And they have the locations on the flyers? Like, it's going to say cafeteria or library or gym? Is that on the flyers?
I'm not sure about that, but we can work to get that information included if it's not there now.
Ms. Smith Folds, I have the locations for Greenwood. It's going to be in the gym on May 23rd, May 24th at Hercules Middle School. It'll be in the cafeteria. And May 25th at Hams Middle, it will be also in the cafeteria.
Thank you so much, everyone, for getting that information to me right away. I appreciate that. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions? Comment? All right. Now we will move on to E, the actual items. And the public hearing for resolution number 832122 for approving for engineer report confirming diagram and ordering levy.
President Christian, sorry, we're up to you. I think trustee Reckler moved item F2 as the first item.
F2?
F2, yeah, which is the third interim report.
Okay. Those are the ones that were pulled.
So trustee Reckler, maybe you can clarify, but I believe she started with F2, then F3. No, excuse me. Maybe trustee Reckler, if you wouldn't mind reminding us of the order.
Sure, if I may. F2, which is the third interim first, followed by F1 attendance and student enrollment update, and then F3 board policy updates due to significant disproportionality.
And those? And you moved to do those before item E?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. We want item F2.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to be here with you again tonight. Tonight, we have a rather unique and uncommon process for the district where we have to present what's called the Third Interim Report. The Third Interim Report is unique in that we only present it if we have a qualified or negative second interim report. And so tonight, the purpose of this is a little different than what you're used to with your normal financial statements, which is why it's a very slimmed-down presentation and financial packet. This is purely to meet the county's oversight requirement. There's, we're not really, it's not designed or put together in a way that's really soliciting board approval or acceptance or feedback, although we always welcome your feedback. Tonight is really about fulfilling this county oversight requirement, which is why you don't even have to accept the report like you normally would or give it a certification. So just, we always talk about this information in context of iterative changes since the last financial report. So the last financial report was second interim. Looking at the revenue side, we see that we have lower P2. That's period two attendance ADA than expected. We'll actually show you those numbers on the course on two more slides. We were able to update our lottery allocation. It's important to recognize that the Third Interim Report does not include the May revised revenue changes because we didn't have them by the time we had to go to print for this item in time for this board meeting. Additionally, on the restricted side of the budget, we were able to make adjustments to several of the categorical programs. Many of these programs, we recognize revenue as the expenditures are made. And so that allowed us to update those as well. Looking on the expenditure side, once again, there were areas where we were able to recognize revenue that corresponded to expenditures. We were also able, on the unrestricted side, to recognize the Chromebook FCC grant as well as some of the increased expenses in transportation and legal fees that we've seen this year. On the restricted side, we saw changes in our textbooks, special ed MPS contracts, eminent maintenance and operation repairs, as well as non-capitalized improvements district-wide. So these were increased expenses that we saw on the general fund. One of the biggest impacts that we see is when we have changes in average daily attendance, the proportion with which each student spends their school year in their seat. And so here we see, for example, with the exception of grade four through six, every grade level, K to three, seven, eight, and nine, 12, are all declining from the January 31st estimate. Now, the governor's made proposal does provide some tools for us to address this in the adopted budget. But as far as meeting our compliance requirement with the county, we needed to use the information we had at the end of April. Looking at the financial statements here, you see we're primarily looking at the right two columns. And the reason we're looking at the right two columns is because the second-to-last column is the changes, the third interim changes. The column to the left of that is where we were at second interim, and the column to the right of that is where we are at third interim. So one of the things to point out is we had to lower our beginning fund balance because we found out based on what we had projected for revenue from last year that actually the expanded learning opportunity funds were going to be less than was originally published by CDE. So CDE published a number. We booked that, and then they revised their number. And we didn't get it booked because they revised it after the closing of last year's books. So now we're recognizing that change that lowers the beginning fund balance. We saw minor changes to revenues, just a slight increase there of, you know, $50,000. But we do see increases in expenditures in those areas that I pointed out on the prior slide. And so what this means is when we look at our fund balance over time, it's actually, we expect to end the year with the combined fund balance of about $5.3 million less at the end of the year than we had projected at second interim. When we look at the components of the ending fund balance, we have, for example, some cash and clearing accounts in banks and also stores, actual materials and supplies that we own. We also have some assigned balances, and we'll dig into those assignments. And to the extent that we have dollars in reserve above the reserve economic uncertainty, then we have unassigned fund balance on the unrestricted side of the budget. On the restricted side of the budget, these are funds that can only be used for the purpose with which you're outlined. So you see, for example, the educator effectiveness grant can only be used on expenditures for fulfilling the plan of the educator effectiveness grant. The lottery fund, restricted lottery fund, so we're talking about textbooks, core materials, and technology to support the distribution of those core materials, learning. And then other restricted balances will be other programs could include things like special education and any other restricted program. When we look at the assigned balances, we see that we still have the tech equipment assignment in the unrestricted side of the budget as well as the academies. As we're working on developing the adopted budget for next year, you'll see these numbers at the adopted budget be markedly different because there are plans in next year's plan to use some of these funds. Finally, when we look forward and look at the multi-year projections, we have to recognize that we're a district that's dealing with declining enrollment. In fact, the very next presentation is going to be talking a little bit about that. We also have to recognize that not only are we losing students to declining enrollment, but the frequency with which they've been showing up this last year has been much lower, and that affects future revenue. The governor's made revision proposal does take a stab at trying to help us with that. We're waiting for the trailer bill language in the coming days to learn how we're supposed to do this proposed calculation so we can tell you what that's going to mean for West Contra Costa. Some of the areas that we're still struggling with is when you, you know, we're overstaffed compared to our staffing matrix. So we set the staffing ideal and look at the enrollment at each school site. We did not do the staffing reduction in March, so we're overstaffed a bit moving forward. We will have, we will be finalizing our submission to the FPM for federal program monitoring. We've responded to most things we can, but there are financial findings, and we'll be able to tell you what the final numbers are on those in the coming weeks. And then, you know, we are seeing some growth in charter schools, and I think, I think we'll learn more about that tonight. Looking at what this means for the multi-year projections, minor changes compared to what we saw before, but effectively without the new income revenue that's included in the May revise and without the cuts that we're working on making for next year in the non-labor areas, we see that effectively we were very similar position to where we were in the second interim in that we're completely out of cash in year three, meaning we wouldn't have enough cash to cover operations. And in fact, we would run out of cash in this model about a month later than originally estimated. So now November instead of October of 2023. Yeah, October 2023 is where we were previously. And so cash is a big deal, and so part of the presentation must include the analysis of cash. So looking over the next 12 months, which is what the county wants us to look at, we see that we expect to end this year with a general fund cash balance of $38,472, roughly. And so with that, I know it definitely doesn't, the presentation doesn't dive into some of the areas as much as we're used to doing because this is very much a compliance presentation. But as we work forward to the adopted budget, we'll be digging much deeper in all of the areas, both programmatically, attendance, staffing, and really hope to give you a really good picture of what next year's plan looks like. I'm free for any questions at this point.
All right. Any questions? Trustee rep?
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. Hey, hold on just a second. Okay. Would you be, what month are P2?
I'm sorry?
What month are P2, period two?
I want to say month seven, but I'd like to confirm that with Kim Chambers, who does attendance.
Okay, that's no problem. And I don't know if I want to spend, if we want to spend time on this right now or if it will roll into the next presentation, but do we know what the causes were for the lowered attendance?
I believe some of that is discussed in the, or at least components of it are discussed in the next presentation. There are a lot of causes. What we're seeing at the lower end is parents not necessarily sending their kids to school. On the lower end of the spectrum, on the upper end, we've seen infancy rates higher, far higher than historical averages. But I certainly wouldn't want to get in front of the great work that the team and the attendance, that the team has done in the next presentation because they really do an exceptional job of digging into detail.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to waste the time on that. Once again, there's no May revise in this, correct?
That is correct, trustee Reckler.
And when, what is the date when the board sees the May revise reflected?
Well, the board will be receiving information in the Friday updates in the coming week or two because we're all attending, all staff is attending the May revised workshop this Friday. We expect the new local control funding formula calculator to be released Thursday or Friday as well. So as we're able to recalculate the revised revenue based on the new calculator, we'll be sharing that information with the board preemptively. But you'll receive the adopted budget first draft in time for the June 15th board meeting. So our goal is to give it to at least two weeks at a time.
Okay.
Okay. And to answer your prior question, P2 is through the end of March.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Trustee Phillips?
I have a question for the superintendent and perhaps the CBO. Maybe it's a joint question. So it's looking like there's going to be an influx of cash into local school districts. My question is, when those monies come in, or if they come in, it looks like it's going to happen. But if or when those monies come in, what's the plan? And what I mean by that is we have this structural deficit that we've been wrestling with for quite some time. Monies have come into the district recently, and those monies have really been used, for lack of a better word, to float the deficit. for lack of a better word, to float the deficit instead of resolve the deficit. So when the new monies come in, is the plan to keep floating the deficit? So it's business as usual or is the plan actually to use the new monies to resolve our structural deficit? And then if there is something left over to add? So basically, are we going to use the new monies to play kick the can? Some more? Are we finally going to get down to business and resolve this deficit issue?
I believe I can answer that question, trustee Phillips. One of the conversations that we had recently with the the county office of Ed, the superintendent, as well as the chief business officer with the county office of Ed was was their requirement that the adopted budget at a very minimum demonstrate that we have cash to meet all operational needs, not only for next fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, which by definition means we have to move the district from a negative certification to at a minimum, a solid qualified certification. So that's the county's baseline minimum. If we don't accomplish that, they will not approve our adopted budget, which has all kinds of potential negative consequences. So we don't want to risk that. So the analogy, the best analogy I can give at this point is we are standing in a fairly deep hole. If I were to to say though, I'd say we're, you know, roughly eye level in the wall, the 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 hole is pretty well filled with water as well. So it's a dangerous situation. There's a lot to celebrate in the May revise, a lot to celebrate there. And and I think so long as we all agree on what the message is and what we can afford to do with it, the first thing we need to do, as you're saying, is build a stairway and climb out of the hole. And so we really can't talk about doing anything new until we've stepped out of the hole and decide how many steps above our our old, you know, zero or or land-based level was. So we can't build a patio until we get out of the hole, so to speak. And and so we will be using, we're still working hard to make cuts and align the staffing where we have vacancies and we can leave those vacancies open to match the staffing plan that was used in order to develop the RIF list. And and this is, this is, you know, we we got a positive nod from the county on this. So for example, if we have secondary teachers resigning from a school in a subject area that we have more than we need according to the staffing matrix, then we would leave those positions open, open and then bring those vacant positions back to you much earlier in the school year to have a conversation with how we're going to handle them, but we wouldn't fill those. However, we we know that if we lose any positions at elementary in STEM, foreign language or special ed, we're going to have to refill those positions and those would not be identified as excess on our current staffing plan for next year. And so we're trying to be very intentional and look at every single retirement, every single resignation and see where it falls in relation to the staffing ideal for next year and where we can mark a position for a for a potential hold or freeze, that's what we're doing. And and I I have to really commend the human resources team who's been working very closely with the business team to keep a working spreadsheet of all these positions as they, as we become aware of them, so they can be tracked and and hopefully perfected through the budget process.
Did you have an opportunity or or did you or Dr. Hurst ask the county? Because I would like to know why their minimum standard for us is that we get to a point where we just have a qualified budget because I mean, can can you explain that? Did they explain why their goal for us, particularly if there is a large influx of of cash, why their goal would not be for us to make the moves that we need to have a positive certification? I don't understand this. I mean, I under, I do understand it. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm asking, do you know why?
It it was not overtly stated. I I could certainly tell you whatever I inferred from the conversations and what I've seen in talking to many county leaders and and financial leaders in in education finance in the in the past couple of months. You know, I I think if you talk to anybody across the bargaining table and we've had a conversation about what year three in the in the multi-year projection looks like and we wait two years till year three is actually here, it looks very, very different. And so certainly the county wants to make sure our current year plan is rock solid, that our second year plan is really well-reasoned, meets all the best practices and how it's developed. But recognizing that year three is far enough out that it's it's arguments can be made on both sides. Are we being too conservative, too liberal? You know, it it gets less solid and part of the reasons it gets less solid is the, for example, the the COLA estimate for the out years it changes wildly. So it may be, you know, in year three, three point five percent now. But by the time it comes here, it could be zero because the economy has stalled because of, you know, it raising interest rates, which is historically what happens when the Fed rage raises interest rates aggressively. We see stagnation in the economy. So that far out, it's very hard, you know, to be super precise. And I think that's kind of the county's acknowledgement. I think they would love for us, I think they would prefer that we get there. And on the flip side of this, the COLA has published six point five, six percent, does not get us completely out of the hole on the multi-year projection when you put in normal cost inflators, things like our utilities, P G and E has made announcements of, you know, upward of twenty percent on the increases. Now, we're calling to 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 confirm what they think it's going to be in our local area, but where you see these kind of hyperinflators, even those when we look two and three years out are not as as typically set in stone and reliable as some of the other areas of the budget assumptions we use when we project that far out. And and so I think there's some recognition of that reality that the variance grows the further out we look.
Is the county going to come here or somebody from the county going to come here and actually tell the board that their preference is for us to make changes to move to positive?
We we could certainly invite them for a discussion, sir.
I would love to hear them come and say that to the board and say that to the public so everyone can hear. Thank you very, very much for answering my questions.
All right, thank you. Trustee Smith Fo.
Thank you so much. When is the F P M coming to the board for review?
So the plan is, I'm sorry, I was looking for some sort of eye contact to know if it was okay to talk. The 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 plan is to bring, we're responding to the last open items that we're allowed to respond to through the F P M process. Actually, as we speak, and and so we're we're waiting for the final review of the items we have uploaded by the reviewers and that will change the amount of the financial penalty. Once we know what that is, the plan is to publish the 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 report itself along with the actions and steps taken and then what remediation actions and steps remain open. One of the, you know, probably the biggest eye opener of the whole F P M process was the fact that we, as a district, could be so much better at compliance and and that we need to make it something that's, you know, important part of our day-to-day operations. And and so we're going to be, you know, we want to make sure that we're not only acknowledging where we've fallen short, but that we're bringing thoughts and plans and idea for the board's consideration and discussion and collaboration on what steps we would take to address those issues moving forward, rather than just saying there's a problem with no, no, no real, you know, help toward finding proper solutions for the, you know, we feel like if we prime the pump, the board will help us get to a really great place. But if we just give you a problem with no, no solutions, that it's 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 just bad for all of us. So that's the plan.
Thank you. And then is there a plan to bring to the board more detail about charter school growth? What charter schools are growing, where they're located? If they're inside the district or outside the district, is there a plan to bring more data to the board around that? And then strategies of how we can bring kids back into the district? Is that a plan to come to the board with any of that information?
So a- a- as I recall from looking at the the what's in the next presentation, there's some data in there that would probably allow us to make some inferences. But but it I I would maybe suggest that if that, if if the data in the next presentation doesn't adequately answer that question, then I've written it down and we can circle back around on that if if that's acceptable.
Thank you. And then can you reconcile with me the fact that we're overstaffed, but we have some so many jobs on Ed join? Is it because we're looking for particular jobs on Ed join? What's, how do you reconcile those two statements?
I I don't know if I should defer to H R on that particular question. When we, when we talk about our, you know, overstaff and we talk about using the staffing matrix, which is a set of formulas we use and we match up to the enrollment at an existing site to say this is the ideal staffing for this school site. Now, ideal is gonna, you know, that's going to be a very different thing depending on who you ask. But this was the culmination of many, many different program leads and and leaders within the district, not only looking at the contractual agreements, but also, you know, things like principals and 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 other people who weighed in and said, look, I understand the formula may be X, but if you don't give me X plus one, my school will not operate. And so there was some conversations about not only where we were from a pure formulaic perspective, but also operationally and then comparing that to where we are today. And so what we saw, much like the information that was in the May reduction enforced list, was that we're a little overstaffed in management compared to where we were four or five years ago and and when when we look in reference to our student population, keeping in mind that we didn't maybe have so many of the same grant programs we have now with their own requirements. On the flip side, we we seem to be lean-staffed at the elementary teaching level, but overstaffed at the secondary teaching level. That's based on the, you know, this this matrix that was developed. That's not to, I'm I'm sure if we asked any secondary teacher, they'd say they don't feel like they're overstaffed because everybody is working very, very hard. But when we, when we look at it from a mathematical perspective and a systems perspective, secondary appeared overstaffed.
Sorry. And then finally, I was on mute. And and then finally, will we, is it projected for us to have cash to move to solid qualified after May? Do we need to wait until, but is that a projection you can make now or no?
Well, certainly we've done back of the napkin numbers and and the May revise projection using the governor's number, meaning the three-year average J D A and the six point five, six percent and the eight and and the two point one billion dollars that's meant to offset STIRS and PERS increases. That's part of the eight billion dollars of flexible funds. That moves us well into the qualified territory, just on the face of it, without any other operational changes.
Okay, so in your scenario that you gave about us being in the hole and water and it's muddy with the projection on just on the back of the napkin, we are out of the hole. No.
We're nearing the top of the hole.
Nearing the top.
A much shallower hole.
Okay, thank you so very much. I appreciate it. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay, that was a discussion item. So now we move on to F one.
Good evening, board, president. Can you guys hear me? I was making sure. Yeah, okay. So good evening, board, superintendent and cabinet. Today, we're going to give you an overview of enrollment trends in the district and some of our outreach efforts around chronic absenteeism. Should I be the one sharing the screen? I can do it. Okay. Allow me a second. Okay, so our goal today is to review the historical enrollment data. Oh, sorry, my name is Manny Trujillo. I'm the director for certain recruitment and retention. Review the historical enrollment data, review our tiered outreach approach that we started talking about last time we presented, review some of the Excel data that we have gathered, identify some next steps and ultimately identify follow-up questions that you have and want brings to inform a future study session. Today, I'm going to talk to you about our tier approach. There's a lot of information in front of you here, but I'm going to zone in on tier one, items two and three first, and then talk about the rest of the pyramid. And then I'm going to come back to tier one. Before I continue, we have a phenomenal team. And when we talk about attendance, it's everyone is involved in attendance. We have three trunty technicians, Barro Bird, Daisy Baragán, and Yedder for La Gaspada. And of course, at the sites, everyone plays a role, our principals, our attendance clerks, our community workers, our teachers, our counselors, our full-service directors, and of course, all of our community-based organizations that interact with our students and provide support. I'm not going to read this to you, but I wanted to name some of the guiding principles that ground the work and our theory in the way that we think about attendance. And but I will zone in on number two, that trusting relationships is at the core of trying to mitigate some of the challenges around chronic absenteeism. It doesn't solve everything, but it's a fundamental foundation and you can read this at your own time. So now I'm going to give you a quick overview of some enrollment trends. Here we see for the last five, eight years, our enrollment, as you can see, our enrollment has gone down and the number of students who have enrolled in charter schools has remained steady. One of the questions that has been brought up is how many kids go to charter schools? My analysis is that many of the families have left our district a few years ago and now their children and younger children are joining the charter schools, are no longer coming to us first and then moving to the charter schools. Here's another way to look at the data. You can see that over the last three years, we have had a steady division of twelve percent of our residents who are eligible to attend our district are choosing to go to charter schools. So there's also another question, where are the students going in addition to charter schools? So one of the things that we did is we looked at the Excel data for this year up to around March. And every time a kid leaves our district, we know in one way where they're going. Either they're telling us they're going to a public, uh, public school system, to a charter school, or they are leaving the state. When we looked at this data more closely, you can see fifty-two percent of them say they are moving to another district in California. Fourteen percent are going to charter schools. When we look at the data and see where they're going, when it goes to public school systems, you can see a little bit of a trend. Some are going to Bayeux Unified. But I'll put your attention to the green lines. These are children that are going to virtual academies. This is new. This is a new trend. It's around ten percent of our population is going. A few years ago, you would not see this. So though we see some movement to Northern California, and I go to the probably because it's cheaper in this area, but their kids are going all over in California. There's another way that children leave the district and that is through our intra-district transfer. Those are the process that we use for children to apply who live in this district, who would like to go to another district. There is a process organized by Ed code that allows a resident who want, who wants to leave to apply. And there are certain categories that allow you to do that. When we break it down for twenty-two, twenty-three, we so far have had five hundred and thirty-nine. Forty-five percent of them are going to Auburn Unified, thirty-one percent are going to Berkeley Unified. You can see the rest is Akalani's or Arinda, all the way to San Francisco. When we break down and understand what qualified them to leave, the bulk of them is because they meet the requirement for work. And the work related requirement is that you work in that school district's boundaries. And the argument is that it facilitates for you to take your children to where you work. And so we have to approve those transfers. The other one is childcare, meaning that there's some caregiver who lives in that other district who is responsible for childcare up to eighth grade and they can provide us proof of that. We have to grant those. Siblings and of course, the sibling dynamic is once you have been granted a transfer, if you have another child, the theory is that you don't want to split a family, so you continue to approve them. And the last one is program preference, meaning that these are children who wanted to leave our district because they are wanting to access a program that we do not offer in our district. And if we cannot provide it in our district, we have to agree to the transfer. And a very small percentage of kids who are in the process of relocating to another school district and they can show us proof of that. By going back to the kids who left the district, we see that six hundred and thirty-one of them told us in Prom Power School that they moved to another public school system. Of those, when we look of of for them by hand, ninety-two of them were not found in cowpats. Now, that could mean that they moved out of the state. And if you live the state, cowpats won't be able to tell me anything. Of the one hundred and seventy-four kids who said they were going to charter schools, we could not find twenty-three of them enrolled in a charter school or in a public system school. And we also have about a hundred and eighteen kids who never showed up to to our district. Of those one hundred and eighteen, when we look for them, Of those 118, when we looked for them, we actually found some of them didn't enroll, but we're still left with 98. When you add them up, that's 213 kids that for efficiency and sort of for, to make everyone understand, we're considered a missing, meaning that we want to do more outreach for them to find out where, where they are. We also did another thing, this is relatively new, where we casted a wider net and looked at every kid who had missed 50% or more of the academic year, for whatever reason. And we had to look at this one at a time. There was no algorithm to really figure out what was the reason. And you can see here sort of the breakdown. One of the biggest themes was there were a lot of kids who were missing because of COVID, but then they, they're back in track. But you see that there were 10 kids who started being missing. They didn't show up because of COVID. They, we lost contact of them and we still haven't found them. And we have about 107 kids who have also attended school, stopped attending, were unclear if they're still with us or not. We haven't dropped them. And so we would consider those also missing students. So in total, we have 117 kids identified through that and 213 identified through CalPads that we would consider missing students this year. So what do we do with that? Well, then we activate tier two and tier three. We're going to be doing some efforts during the summer around home visits. There's a lot of excitement about doing that with our community workers. And this, this morning, we talked to office managers and clerks who are also interested in helping out. And our strategy is one where we will call the families, alert them to the fact that we're looking for them, that we cannot find them. We'll send them a letter with a two-way text option, alerting them that if we do not hear from them, we're going to visit them. We've done this in the past. And when we do this, about 50% of those families answer in one way or another. And that's what we want. We want to find out where they are. And whoever doesn't respond, then we move to tier three, which will be the home visit. This is a little bit, so now I'm going to talk to about our overall strategy around chronic absenteeism. These are the guiding strategies or levers that we want to apply when we're talking about chronic absenteeism, capacity building, actionable data, positive engagement, strategic partnerships. You can see here that we are doing something on every section of the strategy, including having strategic partnerships under tier three with an organization called Cope Family Services to help us support students who really need wraparound services that we cannot provide. I won't take too much time going through this, but this is a quick mental model or flow chart that overviews how our truancy process works. When a student gets three truancy events and the codes are here because they're absent, because they arrived late, or they went home early, that's the G code going home early, 30 minutes or more, you get a letter. The first letter is a gentle reminder. It's a nudge saying, hey, life happens. We get it. But it's been three times. We hope everything's okay. Let us know if you need any support. After that, if you get six or more, it now triggers a requirement for us to have a face-to-face conversation with the family and begin to understand what are the root causes that are leading to the student being absent so much. This is done at the school site through a team, and we have a system called A2A that systematizes the process and allows us to outreach to families. And ultimately, if that intervention does not work and they continue to be absent, they get what we call letter three. And this letter then results in our central team with our transit technicians holding the student attendance review board that can ultimately result in families being referred to court. Parallel to that, our families also receive what we call the excessive excuse absence notification. This is a letter that alerts families that although their excuse absences are excused, they are still missing a lot of school time, and that matters and that can affect their academic achievement. So these, this letter, the excessive excuse and the truancy letter sometimes confuse families. We're thinking of changing the wording to make sure that people understand the difference in them, yet they must go out. And so sometimes families, the wording on the excessive excuse form is a little bit more gentle than the truancy notification. Parents talk to each other and they may understand and, and believe that the letter that they got is the same one as the excessive excuse. So we recognize there's some tension there and we're looking to see better ways of improving the messaging. My apologies, I clicked something else. One of the new things that we have at the end of every conference now is that we're tagging, what are the themes that we're discovering after a conference? This is very subjective. This is at the end of a conference, school identifying some of the themes that we're discussing the conversation. And so you can see here, the one that's coming up the most district-wide is parents cannot be contacted. Either the parent is refusing to pick up the phone, or we don't have good contact information. The other one, 11.84% was families who really believe that their illness are to be excused. And there's a limit up to how many times a child can be absent due to illness without a doctor's note. So there's some work there that we need to do. Of course, because of COVID, we have some for COVID-related. And then we get into other deeper, perhaps more traditional themes that would have happened regardless of COVID, which is anxiety and depression. Students refused to participate. And keep in mind that underneath each of these categories, there are deeper themes and root causes. But when I was first given this position, the question that someone asked me is, what are the reasons why kids are not coming to school? We're beginning to collect data to begin to understand and tell that story. And finally, yes, to calibrate on what is chronic absenteeism, because that is what we're using, is any excuse absence, unexcuse absence and suspensions. So truancy is only unexcused absences. An average daily attendance, which is what sometimes people think we're talking about, is how many students show up to school each day. This is a lot of texting here, but I do want to say that we do organize our work as in tiers. We have a tier one, meaning this is the services that we provide to all of our schools, including giving them actionable data, capacity building, shared accountability, this should say. There's things that we do to monitor at the school site and also things to collect feedback on how we can do our job better. And then we have a tier two, which is work that we do more closely with some of the sites that have the highest chronic absenteeism rate. And one of the biggest differences here is that these focus schools get access to our provided case management, wraparound services. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
All right. Question?
Thank you, President Christian. Mr. Trujillo, thank you so much for the presentation and the data. Honestly, it was very impressive. So I want to thank you and your department for the work on this and coming back for this board meeting as well. I have four questions for you.
Okay.
The first one, I was really interested in seeing the, the data around charter schools and the trend for, for their, their enrollment. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like it has kept steady in the last three years, which to me shows a reduction of attendance at charter schools because there, there are three or four of our charter schools that have actually continued to grow by grade levels since the opening of their petition. So we actually are seeing a decrease in enrollment possibly on charter schools. Is that correct? Is that how you see it as well?
I do say it that way as well, and I would add again, because this is a little nuance, that we're not seeing children starting with us and then going to the charter. We saw that a lot a few years ago, right, where we're hundreds of kids moving. Now that younger siblings are continuing to go to the school that they, their older siblings started instead of coming to us, right? So in a way, we, they, they're, they don't have a relationship with us at all anymore.
Got it. Thank you. My second question is a two-parter. I thought it was interesting, the 4.37% of students have left us to go to the California Virtual Academy. In your conversations and your staff's conversations with those families and students, did they share a part of it was because we didn't have space in our own virtual academy? And if so, would they come back if we grow our enrollment or our space in our own virtual academy?
Right. So we don't have an exit survey. That's something that I do want to implement for every family that leaves to offer them an exit survey so they can tell us, hey, you know, what did we do well? What would keep you here? But from what we know, as we were growing the Vista Virtual Academy, remember that at one point, we did not have enough teachers. So some of these families left because they wanted to do the virtual option, but we could not serve them. And there's something to say about the marketing that some of these schools do, where they really, what they were promising. And again, you know, sort of like what we're hearing from parents is that they wanted distance learning like it was before COVID. And some of these virtual academies have a very comprehensive thought-out ecosystem that gets very close to that, even though it's still very competitive and very similar to what Vista Virtual Academy offers. But they, they, they have a lot of years of experience about how to sell it. So I do think some of our families thought they were going back to distance learning, and we have had some people come back as well.
Thank you. My third question is, I also found interesting the 15.5% of families that left us for other public schools because of program preferences. And my question, and, and this might be for Dr. Horst or Ms. Martin or for you, Mr. Trujillo, but I wonder if that data might lead to us potentially offering some of those program preferences that we might not have in this district. And, and I see slide 35, which shows some of that, for example, accelerated math and, and a couple of other things. I mean, I think that we offer some of these things, but let's say we don't. So I wonder if it will affect also our programs in the future? And that question can be for anyone.
I can say that it is my job to identify these themes and bring them to the system and say, this is why families are leaving. There's a lot in there to say specifically around math. There's a philosophical difference around what is the right way to provide math to students. And the accelerated model is going out of fashion. And that's what families use, whether that's really intentional, that they want their child to have an accelerated math experience, or they use it as a loophole that they found to be able to, to get an approval. So it's a little bit difficult to know for sure if they really want to go because of that or somehow they heard, hey, they offered this at this district and they don't offer here. So by law, that we have to grant a transfer. But these are the overall themes. Accelerated math has been one of the biggest ones.
Thank you. And my last question was around your home visit program, which is amazing. Who did those home visits?
Yeah. So when the, when, what I alluded to was at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, we did it with community workers and a few other paraprofessionals who we actively did phone banking. We learned a lot about how to do a home visit. Keep in mind, if you're familiar with a home visit as a previous teacher, you know, the traditional home visit is no surprise home visit, right? You're going to someone's house and they know you're going. This is a little bit more home canvassing, where we're going to a home of someone that we have not heard from. So safety precautions are really important, always doing it in pairs. But what we found, and having grown in this community, you know, and how we romanticize our community sometimes, is that people are home, just like everybody else. And then if anyone feels like they don't feel safe knocking on someone's house, then we stop, right? For whatever reason, a dog barking, you can't get in. But we found from that experience is that 50% of the families, once they got the letter, said, wait a minute, I don't want someone to come to my house. I'm here. What do you want? And that's okay, even though we tried calling them before and the school tried. It's okay. We, we will reengage with them. And then the other ones, there were legitimate technology issues. They had moved. So this summer, it will be again a repeat of community workers and other folks. I do want to name that the, the energy, the amount of time that frontline staff have is very low right now, right? So asking people to do this, though it's a best practice and strategy, it's a big ask right now. It's always been a big ask. But you know, the amount of people interested is higher for summer than it is for now, right? People are tired, right? So we're definitely going to be doing a lot of this work during the summer. My vision is that we will do home visits from the third week of school year with teams starting next year so that we don't have hundreds of kids to go look for.
Thank you so much, Mr. Trujillo. And kudos to you and your department.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Trezey Smith-Phoe?
Thank you. Um, so I think some of my questions can be answered rather quickly. When truancy, the definition of a truancy is unexcused absence, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But you could get a truancy letter if you've had three excused absences, like you left early or you came to school late. You, is that accurate too?
You can get a, a chronic absenteeism letter for those reasons. That's correct. Yes.
Do parents think that it's a truancy letter? Is it titled a truancy letter?
No, it's not. But that word, that language has been there for so long. And so that we actually default to using the word attendance, right? Because it's easier to say than chronic upset, absenteeism. Yes.
Okay. And then what are we doing to change the lack of early relationships, right? Because you said that some, some parents, families don't have relationships with the school district, right? But there are strategies to go to our daycares, right? Our two-year-olds, our three-year-olds, our four-year-olds, before they get into TK and start building those relationships. What strategies is your office implementing to start building those relationships?
I appreciate that question. It's a big question, and I'm not going to pretend to have all the answers. The way I've been thinking about it is my first part of taking over this role was a little bit of cleanup, organizing systems, understanding how we did things and learning more about the transfer process. Why are, for lack of a better word, customers leaving us, right? What's keeping them? What's not? There's definitely a need to do more targeted social media outreach. Good example would be our TK program. We are having great success in the Hercules and El Cerrito area. They're, they're, they're full, and that's great. And there are other areas where we need some support. The idea of doing flyers is an old idea now. So it's a lot of social media targeting that we can do. We're in communication, in coordination with the communications department to do more of that. But going back to relationships, it really is going back to the traditional home visit. Those traditional home visits as a, as a tier one strategy at school site. So my hope is that next year, we'll be working with the schools with the highest chronic rate and helping some of them jumpstart the tradition, a tradition that we have here, by the way, of doing home visits, the relational home visits. The ones where you go and you don't talk about academics, you have a human moment, you get to know each other. If you can't pronounce my last name, call me by my first name. And we changed cell phone numbers, and those have rendered incredible results. They're not terribly expensive, but they do cost a little bit of money. So I think part of our outreach is just also extending the hand and letting families know that we care in multiple ways. And one of those ways is doing home visits. But I do think there's going to be, and I'm, I'm looking forward to coming back and provide a thorough monthly plan of outreach for recruitment of students.
And then my next question is, how many students have been doing homeschool since 2019, 2020 school year? Do we have data on students who have done, chosen to be homeschooled and parents who have chosen to do homeschool programs versus homeschool is different than our virtual, you know, than virtual academies? Do we have any data around that?
We do have that. I don't have it at the tip of my fingers, but the same data that I used to find out if they went to a charter school or public school, that same data set could tell me how many of them indicated that they went to homeschool. Now, should they, around homeschool, parents say that, and then they end up transferring someplace else. So it, it's a little bit of a, but we do have the data of what they told us when they left of how many. And I can come back and provide that in writing if you like.
Thank you. And then just a couple of more. Can you talk about the impact of not giving bus passes? We only do bus passes for high school now, right? It used to be that we had a bus pass program that middle schools could get hype to get bus passes, right? Or other people could get bus passes. Can you tell me the impact of not giving out bus passes on attendance and chronic absenteeism?
Yes. Thank you for using the terminology. I know it's a, a longer, you know, it doesn't roll in our tongue. So actually, on the bus pass program, I'm prepared, yeah, to say today that we are proposing to our WIC Tech who funds us for 2,500 bus passes to extend it to middle school and high school. Many of our students are not using the bus pass anymore. They're taking Uber. They're taking Lyft. I cannot offer them a Lyft voucher or nothing like that. But that then means that we can offer the bus passes that are not being used at the high school level and extend them to sixth grade and up, middle and some of the elementaries. And my hope is, I think I've built the case for this year and last year that high school students don't use them as much. We used to mail them and assume they were using them. We've switched to a strategy of giving them to the, to the students. And it was interesting to see how many of them never came to collect the bus pass. And it's because they were not using it and they did not need it. So we were, what we discovered was that we were giving bus passes to families who maybe completed the application because it was offered at orientation or whatever, but in the end did not end up using it. So we actually can serve more kids this way by giving. So we actually can serve more kids this way by giving it to them the old way, which is. At the, at the school side during a particular pair of lunchtime, come and pick up your bus pass. So I'm excited about that. That's going to help us extend those twenty five hundred to sixth grade to twelfth grade starting next year.
Thank you for that. I just have two more. You talked about transfers. You talked about transfers. I want to talk about transfers from area to area, right? So do we have data to where we can see transfers from Hercules to Pinal, right? Or Kennedy to Hercules or. That's the first question, right? Do we have information about those broad transfers from, you know, from area to area? And then do we have information about transfers inside areas from Lupine to Aloney? From, you know, Aloney to Hannah Ranch. Do we have that information? And if we do have that information, are we asking follow up questions to why? Why do you want to transfer from this area to this area? And then we look for those root causes too, because I think that's part of. Strategic planning, right? That's part of making sure that we are not inequitable, right? Making sure that kids can be in their neighborhood schools and have the opportunities that are granted to kids in other neighborhood schools. So are we collecting that data?
In a way we are, and that's a very, I appreciate that question because. When we do an intra district transfer, there are more options, very similar to the one where you want to leave the district. You can choose to go because you already have a child at that site. But, or you work in that area. So if you work at that school site, you get priority. Program preference. So we have that data of how many are moving because say of the DLI program or the Mandarin program at the Mandarin School, West County Mandarin. But there's also a very broad category that I, I appreciate your point, which is called parental preference, essentially because I want to, right? Underneath that want to, and there's, I'm sorry, there's also the option of moving from a low performing school. To a school that it's not identified as a low performing school. This is something that the board chose to keep a few years ago, after No Child Left Behind Sunset. So we have that option and we honor it. So that one's clear to know why they're asking, right? They don't want to be at a low performing school, but we do not have deeper data and we do not ask right now. For those who have the parental preference, why are you interested in moving, right? In that sense, it's the, the transfers are mostly from Richmond, San Pablo to El Cerrito area. That's, I can say that's the, that's where the arrow would point, where people want to go to. There are cases where it's the other way around, maybe to the ANSA and Hercules. But most of the time families are wanting to go to Madera, Kensington, Harding, Fairmont, Coromatsu and El Cerrito High.
And do we have data on how many students get accepted yearly at Kensington, Madera, Fairmont, El Cerrito High? We have that data?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah. And then we've, I have data that I inherited that I, you know, I can speak to how clean that data is. And I have data that I'm responsible for this year of how many we have received, how many we have approved. So there's a difference between how many people asked and then how many were actually accepted. I have, I can break down all that data.
I would love to see that. Thank you so much. And my very final question is, we said that it's excused. For example, if you have a doctor's note, right? What protections do we put in in case families say, you know what? I don't have a family doctor. I don't have a family doctor. I don't use the local clinic, but I'm telling you as a parent that my child was sick, right? How are we ensuring that that's validated also, right? Because not everyone has access to a family doctor.
Yeah. I appreciate the question. Definitely when we did our vaccine clinics, one of my takeaways was that we needed to do enrollment fairs. There's really no reason why in California, a child does not have a primary pediatrician. There's really no reason. It's accessible. It's easy to apply, but it's not intuitive. You've never done it. So I do think we need to do a better job of helping families enroll in collaboration with the county and other agencies. Instead of just providing vaccinations, like we should help them enroll. I will answer the question this way. If there's relationship and trust, right? Then the families who are authentically saying that that is what's going on, it's easy to believe and understand. There's also a big space of wondering if a family is trying to navigate other, whatever reason. To be left alone, because whatever's going on, it's either too difficult to talk about. I don't want to tell you what's going on. So I'm saying my kid is sick. So I go back to grounding our work around relationships at the teacher and at the school. And, you know, the attendance clerk has a very hard job. They do a great job, but it is kind of like getting a bill collector's call every day. That is not the person that is gonna, that you might want to open up and say, you know what's going on? What's going on is I'm getting a divorce. And I, I can't get up in the morning. I'm depressed. And so my kid is not going to school right now. Those conversations are the conferences, right? And, and on top of that, if the teacher and the parent have a relationship. Maybe the teacher can, can find out what's going on. So there is, I am considering other districts do this. Where we do have families have to complete a form. I appreciate the question. If a family doesn't have a doctor, I think it would trigger some collaboration with Ms. Martin and full service. Department to talk about getting enrollment, because I've been here a long time and I can tell you, I remember when we didn't have Cover California and we did Healthy Families. Now there really is no reason why a kid cannot have access, even undocumented children. But you, you bring up a good point. There might be some families who legitimately have this. So we, this work is human work. So we do it one at a time.
Thank you so much. And I, I appreciate the presentation and I look forward to receiving some more of that kind of deep dive data. I'm complete, President Christian.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Reckler.
Thank you for your report. I also want to thank your team for all of this work and the data. This has been years coming. I'm so excited to see this. This is really terrific. It gives you actionable data points where you can really begin to build out. A bunch of strategies. So I'm really grateful to see this. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is. Maybe to the best of your knowledge, I, I don't know. How did the inter-district transfer policy get created? And is there anything that is perhaps codified in the law that you have to do?
Yes. So. I don't know how it was created, but what I can tell you is that there are. A lot of rules on top of rules that have been mixed up that we're cleaning up. So one of the cleanups is bringing perhaps an updated board policy around our transfers. I have been in communication with the county to calibrate and ask the question, exactly what are the legal expectations? Keep in mind that when I deny a transfer and I, I, you know, I write letters every night. Explain it to someone after they appeal my first decision to say no, why they said, you know, why they think I made a mistake. Keep in mind that those appeals, they have the right to go to the county office of ed and appeal directly to the board. So I'm really invested in making sure that we don't waste our time in, in that if I deny something in the board, that board is going to override me. That we're in the same page. And so that has brought up the question, trustee Reckler of updating our board policy and making sure that we're following the rules. But there's also a lot of leeway, as I'm understanding, that every district can create their own parameters. Within limits of what we will allow to be an out of district transfer approval. So there might be some possibilities to be, get more specific and more narrow on what are the options that we can use. Yeah. But I don't, I'm not done with that sort of research, ma'am. So to continue.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, I think you touched on, but I just want to come back to it again. On the conferences and the reason for the, the reasons that come out of the conferences. I'm, can you talk about what happens when, a little bit more, when those reasons come forward? I guess I'm kind of, I guess I'm going down the SAR path or the, I mean, the one that really stuck out for me was transportation. And you kind of touched on that, you know, like that one might be. More. Easy to solve, but in general, you know, if you can talk about those big categories and what happens.
Yes. For broader context, and I didn't frame it here, the, the muscle that we wanted to strengthen as an organization. Was actually shifting from having informal, over the phone, one-on-one check-ins. And calling those conferences to move into a more formal, more human restorative center conference with two individuals. Maybe not the attendance clerk for that purpose. And so we're at that space where we're starting to do conferences and before the pandemic started, that's what we were working on. Moving from, I spoke to the parent over the phone and she told me this is going on. That, that, that doesn't work. You know, a conference elevates the importance. You have to create the right environment for people to open up. And tell you what's going on if they feel comfortable and safe to do that. So we were, we're, we're getting stronger in doing that. Then the next level was, well, what, what came out of those conferences, right? What are the themes? Those are the, the next step. The next level of this is the moment someone says, well, the reason I'm not able to come to school is because. I don't have money for gas. That's why, you know, I can't, I don't have money for that. How do I help that family at that moment? I'm not there, but my colleagues and, and the rest of the system is there. How will they get the support they need to immediately troubleshoot that? That's the next le- level of this, right? That, so this themes help us think about what are the services that we need to provide? As a toolkit for school sites, which sites need the most. This is also broken down by school sites for them to look at. So there's more to come around that and how do we make it accessible? A lot of this work is in collaboration with Martin Blake and the Full Service Initiative, having strong care teams. And even beginning to identify, for example, how many of these children are Kaiser children? If the theme is around depression and they happen to be Kaiser Res members. Why can't we ask Kaiser to come to our schools and provide services there? So the kids don't have to leave school. So I, 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 I wish I could tell you more about how we're going to do this, but we're still in that, we're still at the beginning of that conversation.
And then finally, there's a, a whole bunch of data, a lot of paths that you can take with the data. What, what's, what are the big things that jump out to you in terms of making a plan? Like what do you, what do you think you're going to tackle first? And then when will we hear from you again?
Yeah. Um, this summer, you know, I think we're also going to get some data from the home visits as well, right? Like what happened to these families who have sort of disappeared? Is it something that we did? Is it the way that we connected with them? Did we not try hard enough? There's always someone that doesn't pick up the phone. Because they know the school's calling and then we call and get on our number and we get to talk to them. Right? Schools get really upset about that because they tried everything and they're, they thinking, you know, but there's something there. Why didn't they pick up the phone for that school? What's not working there? So there's still some, some collection of data that we can gather from those home visits. I still believe whether a school has a thirty five percent chronic absenteeism rate or ten percent. Then the number one strategies are tier one, making sure that children feel safe at that school. So that's the collaboration. Again, like I said, attendance is everyone's work. And attendance for me is just saying, there's nothing as attendicitis, right? So all we know is a kid is not coming to school. Why they're not coming to school, that's the real next step, right? So tier one, making sure kids feel safe, to me feels like a big rock that we need to address. And number two, strengthening strategies to strengthen relationships, so that we don't have to build a relationship. At a conference, that we have built relationships before that happened, so that families can ask for help if they need to, or we can troubleshoot. But I do want to say that we will also probably identify things that are beyond our purview and our ability to control. And I do think that is healthy for the system to know and to reflect on that and try to tackle as well. And maybe then have broader requests of our local government agencies and cities about things that we cannot control. But there are things that, that I think we will learn, for example, anecdotally, I can tell you that. A, a lot of families struggle with our kinder drop off time and the pickup time, the pickup time for kinder and pickup for second grader. Right? They're, they're about thirty minutes apart and traffic is piling up. So if I'm picking up my kindergartner, I might as well pick up my second grader. Well, now your second grader is leaving thirty minutes before school ended. And mom is trying to be efficient or dad is trying to be efficient, but second grader is losing thirty minutes of instruction, right? Cause it's bell to bell instruction. So there are some things that I think we can, we can change and there's always a plus and a delta when we make changes. Yeah.
Okay, great. Once again, thank you and thank your team so much. I'm complete.
Okay. All right, next item. F three, right?
President Christian, point of order.
Go ahead.
It is nine fifty-two. If we are going to get through F three and action items E one, E two. And G and H, I think that we need to extend. So I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we extend the meeting until we finish F three, E one, E two. G and H.
Mr. Chair, if I could point out. That at ten o'clock, we automatically go to E one and E two.
May I make a motion that we extend the meeting until we complete all agenda items?
Absolutely.
I would like to make a motion that we extend the meeting until we complete all agenda items, which include. G, comments from the board and H and I.
Okay.
Actually, I'm sorry. Let me make a friendly amendment to that. Or let me, I would, I'd like to make a new motion, another motion. I would like to correct the motion I just made. However, it needs to be done, Ms. Tammy. May I do it again?
Absolutely.
I would like to make a motion that we finish the agenda. Ensuring that we do G, where only the student trustees are able to give their final comments at their very last. Board meeting, if we could do that.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved. It has been second. All right. And. Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Trustee Smith-Pho.
Smith-Pho, yes.
Uh, trustee Phillips.
Respectfully, nay.
Uh, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, no.
Clerk Gonzalez-Soi.
Gonzalez-Soi, yes.
And I am. Yeah, no.
President Christian, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we finish. That we finish all the discussion items and the action items. Which to clarify is just F three. E one and E two, which we have to do tonight.
Okay. So it's been moved. It's a second.
Point of order, President Christian.
Is there a second? Second.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been second. But Trezey Smith-Pho. All right. Uh, trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores.
Flores, yes.
Uh, trustee Smith-Pho.
Smith-Pho, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Nay.
Trustee.
I, I have a question. No, I actually have a question because the motion to me is a little funky. So I'm gonna. Yeah, because we could potentially, if we stop talking, finish all of this by ten thirty. So I'm not saying. That I don't want to finish, but there was no time limit put on it. You, you see what I'm saying? That's why it's a little funky to me, because I do want to finish it all, but none of that means we have to be here past ten thirty.
All right.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be here. Yeah, I, I don't want to be here past 10:30. That's not my intention. I think that if we do vote this through and we just.
There's no discussion on this item. He was asking for clarification on the.
But I'm the maker of the motion, right?
That comes from the chair.
I'm sorry?
It comes from the chair.
It comes from the chair, okay.
Okay, you can ask him to, to clarify, you know, go. The motion.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Parliamentarian. Thank you, President Christian. Yeah, I mean, my intention is not to go past 10:30. I think that will be done before, if we actually just get through the items. But my, but because at 10 o'clock exactly, F three would be moved to the next agenda. That's why I felt like I needed to make the motion. Because otherwise it would be automatically moved to the next meeting. And that's, that would be the fourth time that we've had to move this item to the next meeting.
You, go ahead.
Could, would you accept it? Would you accept the friendly amendment that just says we'll work until 10:30?
Through the, through the chair, yes, but we've.
That motion would be out of order because that's actually what we already have on the agenda.
To work till 10:30. Okay, so there's no need for my motion is what you're, what you're saying. Okay.
President Christian, I have a point of order.
Okay, go ahead.
If the agenda says that we will work to 10:30, that includes us actually having the potentiality to actually get through the entire agenda, correct? Meaning that we could actually, if we work to 10:30, it means that we can go all the way to I. Is that accurate?
Yes, you, you, you're right. According to the parliamentarian.
Thank you.
We have that potential.
I'm ready to, to move the agenda, to keep moving. Thank you.
We have a motion, we need to vote on this motion. Your vote was.
My vote is still no.
Okay, so who is next?
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, no.
All right, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
And then me. Let's get, yes, if we get through, until we finish this and then we go from there.
You're saying yes, so we will not be doing G or H? We're just doing the, we're doing F three, E one and E two?
Yeah, those are the ones that's left, right?
Uh, G is comments. We won't get to it.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion passed three to two.
F three.
Okay, good evening. We're President Christian, trustee superintendent of his cabinet and Ed Partners. This is for discussion board policy six one five nine point one. These board policies require an update as a part of our comprehensive coordinated early intervening services known as the CSIS Plan. And districts that are found significantly disproportionate, we must review our policies and update. We did do that work and we did find that there was one policy that needed to be updated. And we updated it and compared it to the California School Board Associations, which is the CSBA. And we modeled it after that. And so today we're just bringing that for discussion. And then the next meeting we would need to vote. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Questions? All right. So we move. E one.
Okay, let me share my screen. Sorry about that, two seconds here. All right, tonight we're asking for the public hearing for resolution eight three twenty-one twenty-two for approving the engineer's report confirming diagram and ordering the levy of assessment for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we would like to ask that we open up the public hearing.
So with the board president's permission. Thank you. With the board president's permission, we would like to open the public hearing at this time. And with that, we'll open up public comment. Public comment will be over the next 10 minutes. And if there's any speakers for public comment, they will have one minute per person. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. We have Ms. Joanna Pace, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. This is Joanna Pace with publiccore.net. In the interest of making this as easy for the public to follow your process, not just about this item with the MRAD, but could you please make sure the board president's picture is on the Zoom screen? This Zoom user cannot see the board president, hasn't seen him for the last 20 minutes. And whatever the heck that, that bad sound is with the microphone, it's bad for us too. Just in general, it's just very difficult to hear and it's disconcerting for people in the public to not be able to see the board president directing meeting. Also, the parliamentarian has been very hard to hear for the public. And it's, it's kind of like having two meetings going on and the public only gets to, to be at the meeting that's less informed. Thank you. I, I appreciate all that MRAD funds do for the public and I would like you to approve this report. Thanks.
That concludes public comment.
We would like to ask the board to approve the engineering report and the levy of the tax for the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Any questions to it? All right, need a motion?
President Christian, I'll move that we accept the report.
All right, it's been moved. And now.
Sorry.
You meant adopt.
Sorry, I, I move that we adopt the report. Thank you.
All right, and is there a second?
Reckler will second.
It's been second. And we go to the vote. It comments. Now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
Uh, trustee Smith-Pho?
Smith-Pho, yes.
Uh, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Uh, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
And just clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
And myself is a yes. And the motion carries. All right. E two.
All right, let me pull this one up. So tonight, pursuant to the board direction, all change orders that caused contracts to change in excess of 10% or are over $250,000 need to come to board as an action item. Tonight, we're asking the board to approve change order number nine for the North Valley High Fields Project. This particular change order is required due to design changes. The original design is not billable. We are having to change the design for the footings for our fence, goalposts and foul pole line. The total cut change for this contract is $302,453. And we're asking the board to approve this change order tonight.
Any questions to it? Need a motion?
President Christian, I'll move that we approve the change order.
All right, it's been moved, second?
Second.
All right, it's been second by trustee Phillips, move by clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, all right. Comment. All right, we go to the vote, trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
Uh, trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
Uh, trustee Smith-Pho?
Smith-Pho, yes.
Uh, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Uh, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Uh, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
And myself is a yes.
President Christian, I have a point of order.
Uh, what's the point of order?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that with 11 minutes left, that we hear from the student trustees at their very last board meeting.
If it's no second, then the motion dies.
All right, can we think of that? Can I think of that?
All right, to the vote. Trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
Trustee Flores?
Flores, yes.
Trustee Smith-Pho?
Smith-Pho, yes.
Uh, trustee, uh, Reckler? Uh, Phillips. Trustee Phillips?
I have a question. Is this not the same motion that was already defeated?
A board member has a right to do a, do a same motion again. A board member has a.
The chair has to answer that or ask someone to answer it? And the chair is asking me to answer that. Um, the first motion had more parts. So this is not the exact same motion.
Okay.
It counts as a new motion.
Okay, Phillips respectfully, nay.
All right, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee, uh, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Right to report, uh, the student trustees. A minute apiece. Five minutes apiece.
All right, someone's make a, a comment. I want to thank board for, um, helping trustee Flores and I throughout this semester. I'm really appreciative of this opportunity. Uh, and I wish the All Student Congress and future members, both middle school, high school, that they will also put great respects on this position and continue to work for Student Voice. Thank you very much.
Okay, hi, everyone. So for the, for the agenda, my comments on the agenda, you know, during public comment, one voice that I am gonna miss hearing at every board meeting would be Maisha Harris. She's always so bright and always bring positivity in the board during public comment. So, um, yeah, and I really like the quote that she shared with us today about teachers and how a great impact that teachers give for the students, you know, like one little thing that a teacher does for a student could, it really means a lot, you know? All the support that they give, they do really need to be acknowledged more and be appreciated more. And for the, I think there should be more support for the bilingual teachers and students. That, that's something that's very important to me. I was in a bilingual program when I was in elementary and baby elementary. Ever since I was in kinder, I was in bilingual classes up until fifth grade, no, fourth grade and then fifth grade. That's when I started my actual classes. I got reclassified in fifth grade from help of one of my teachers and I just think the importance of like helping these kids, you know, because being bilingual is so important, you know? You guys, we get like this type of, um, ability, you know, to understand these two languages, think critically in these two languages. And it, I just think it's very important to keep pursuing that for other students. And yeah, and once again, I would like to thank all of you guys for having me here for this term. And I'm very, very, very admired by the future student trustees. Their speeches were amazing. I know most of them left already early, but I'm just really proud of them. And I'm excited to what they have to bring for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are adjourned at. It's ten fourteen.
You got an answer?
All right, and we have adjourned?
We are adjourned at what?
Ten fourteen.
So you have to actually say we are adjourned.
We adjourned at ten fourteen.